We have all that visual.
Are you ready, Susan?
Yep.
Okay, all right. What time is it? I'm calling the City of Gobar Special Meeting to order at 6:54. Please stand for White's lady. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, make it note that all council members are here. We also have Laura Kelly here, staff, and Margaret King, the city attorney. Since this is a special meeting, we don't have the other start offs, so we will go straight into the new business. I'm expecting us to spend maybe an hour on new business, and then forty-five minutes in the executive session, and then to return on the possible action. So let's go ahead and get started with this. You have a packet with you, and let's go through it in sequence, if you don't mind. And the first thing on here is this timeline, the majoral timeline. I'm starting off with the majoral because that was the initiation of several of these things. And initiating the majoral timeline, this just goes through it and describes all the activities that were taken on this. It started out May 29th, when the finance committee started questioning some gas credit card purchases. The next day, Laura Kelly and John White were with the mayor on the possible misuse of the credit card. Immediately thereafter, as the regular meeting, John changed the procedures. Okay, John changed the procedures that they were doing on the credit card, and John and Crystal did some investigation on meeting attendance and such, and then filed an incident report. The rest of it, you can read for yourself, and it's gone on through it. There was a sequence. Carl was terminated, he filed for unemployment, it got denied, and then he had an attorney show up. And so then we started the attorney days. And it went through, and then we settled, and for about seventy-five hundred dollars, got Carl after the attorney. And then we had a specialist attorney come on board who handled it, and basically she and the other attorney went back and forth at it for a while to get to the settlement. And the bill, our attorney bill, that was about seventy thousand dollars. And AWC took care of half of the settlement price, but not the attorney fees. And then it went on through, and in the next year, state auditor made some comments about it. April 9th, the Snohomish County Prosecutor finally finished handling the incident report, and basically said there was insufficient evidence, the evidence was insufficient for future further action. And the Department of Health came through, both the regional office and state office took a look at it and said, not enough stuff there, so. Anyway, the next one is Janice Howard on majoral settlement. I had some questions about it. How, you know, could have bought it, how much would it take to buy it, and so forth like And my personal estimate that had it bought it, it would have been between ten and twenty thousand bucks to go through the battle with it. Well, she sent me an email on this, and she went through that, and you can see that the cost of three lawsuits that didn't get to trial but end up being settled from two-hundred-and-ninety-two to eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. And she had a simple employment issue that only cost them twelve thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. So as far as the AWC goes, Gobar wins the gold medal for the least expensive. And she goes on to talk about how much money it was missed. So that's the history of the majoral activity. So does council have any questions about this?
No, the whole, so the incident report was forwarded to Snohomish County Prosecutor, who actually conducted the investigation for criminal action.
No, actually, the way it worked was it went to the deputy. And the deputy did the investigation, put it in, submitted it in, and sometime around, I think it was December, is when the prosecutor finally got to it. It was mixed up, two items. And there was no damage, no to anything. The part about the Wells being shut down, Carl mentioned something, evidence probably says something to Richard that night. Yes, ma'am?
I was just going to say, basically what happens is after the investigation was done and it was forwarded to the prosecutor, prosecutor reviewed it and did appeal that there was sufficient evidence to merit moving forward with actual prosecution of the case. And that's the discretion of the prosecutor to make that decision.
So all I'm doing is, my intent with my statement or query was just to set the record that in fact this had been submitted and consulted as a legal action, and that for legal action it was not enough evidence to pursue the.
Yeah, it was prosecutor's decision, right?
Right, okay. So we had the full record, the only, yeah, so we can go into more detail on this, but that's pretty much how it was. A lot of people looked at it and they said, not bad enough to pardon over. Sorry. All right, the next thing we have is an overview of the different litigation. I'm not going to go into that right now. I'm going to skip over that and talk about the Block lawsuit number one. That was one that was filed primarily because of the missing letter. There was supposedly a letter written, or there was a letter discussed about the end of the thing that Crystal was going to write about the Steve Schilling plan. And she was going to write a letter to, if I remember right, Snohomish County, I mean, excuse me, Snohomish County Health District, which is actually a state function. And she never wrote the letter, is what was what happened. So anyway, then there was a lawsuit to find the letter, and it ended up after a while being dismissed. I think it was filed in February 2010, and when was it filed? Anyway, we spent about six months on it, I believe. I'm having to work from there, because I don't have a really plan. And it went nowhere, and they just dismissed it on their own after several pieces of work. As a thing about it, for something that didn't even go to trial, or didn't have a settlement, the city was still at about forty thousand dollars by my rough count in cost on handling that account. And that was just legal work on digging up stuff, getting the letters out and such. And it drug out longer than I wanted, but it did get settled, I think, in about a six month period.
It was dismissed?
Dismissed, excuse me, dismissed in about a six month period. I'll stop and take any questions? Okay. Block lawsuit number two, this is the one, the timeline is in there. It was filed in February, and this one has been going on since February 2010. And you can see what it is, there's two public records requests that were done back in late 2008 and February 2009. And then the lawsuit is over how the attorney-client stuff was handled. Whether, there's some records were withheld, and the records that were withheld had a description of what they were from to and subject, and then, but not given out, because some records were redacted with the redaction information and exemption authority. And so what they're talking about is, they think they withheld records that weren't exempt, that weren't not exempt, and are which should have been redacted or withheld. And redacted portions of the records where the records were not exempt, and then didn't adequately identify records that were redacted, and did not, and refused to provide copies of electronics in native electronic format. So if that's what this is going on, again, it's on how the record request was presented. So any questions on that? We'll talk about that more in closed session.
So at this point, you're not going to get into details about?
I would be glad to go into details of the past history.
So which records were withheld? I mean, so, under the first records request, December 8, 2008, the first sentence states they requested all pertaining, all documents pertaining to Carl Margiell alleged theft, which shall include all city investigation files. And we were, we discussed during the termination timeline that there was an incident report filed, and then that went to the sheriff's department. Is that one of the records that was not disclosed, or?
Well, I'm not certain. I did look at it, the lawsuit is, was over a certain set of documents, and I went and reviewed all of them. I don't remember the report being in there. Now, the report, okay, since there was no charges made, I believe this report qualifies as a non-conviction criminal record, which the sheriff doesn't, which the prosecutor does not release. I'm not sure, because it's also the end use and subsequent to employment action, so, but I can't answer that question specifically. There were a lot of records provided, and they're not saying, and they're saying, the, they're not arguing that they didn't get something, as far as I can tell, but what they got didn't fit their procedures.
Right. So I think the allegation really is, is centers around whether the city had anything to hide or did not. And I guess, so from my perspective, then, did we actually act in good faith to disclose all that we could?
I was not involved, so I can't answer personally. However, Cheryl Byer handled that. She's a very, very good attorney. She's actually, I believe, a part-time municipal judge. Grafta, Tom Grafta, I really liked working with. There was no need to hide anything, there was nothing to hide. Everything, all of the settlement stuff and so forth was there, and investigative, I mean settlement agreement was done in open meeting. And it was a question, I believe, of the emails and primarily of the attorney-client redactions, is the best I know. You can, Jeff Myers, we'll be talking to him on the phone in the closed session, and you can ask him some more specific questions on that. Margaret, are you, do you have any familiarity with that?
My understanding, and again, it's not a case that I'm working on, but my understanding is essentially, the arguments are that whether or not documents that were redacted under attorney-client privilege should have been redacted under attorney-client privilege. So it really had to do with communications between the attorney and the client advising on legal issues, and the issue is whether or not those were properly withheld, I believe is the issue. But I'm not, I'm not inter, involved in that case, so I would have to defer to Jeff.
Now, the next stack of paper after this one is the lawsuit itself, the claim, so if you want to go into reading details, this goes into more details than I gave. And I'll let you work on it for a few minutes, and when everybody's ready, we'll move on.
Maybe we should be clear that this is also a petition, Dr. Byer, this is not a response to the city.
No, this is not a response to the city, this is the actual complaint.
Right.
This was mine.
And as I understand it, you know, there's, there, there's discussions about setting up discovery depositions in that case coming up next month.
Yes.
So at this point, I don't believe the plaintiff's even imposed to identify what in fact was not provided. So it's probably going to turn on, you know, a judge's decision of whether they think that the documents in effect are under attorney-client privilege. That's been predicated.
The Attorney General just partially lost the lawsuit on that. So, you know, it's, I'm not going to go much more. Okay, if there's no more questions on that one, we'll go to the Ford lawsuit number one, I'm calling it. And there is the record, the three records requests and claims made. And the city responded in court, and there's the summary of the judge's review, and I didn't put the whole of everything in. And Forbes has filed an appeal with the appellate court, and is represented by Attorney General.
And the status on that is that it's been fully briefed to the Court of Appeals, and we're waiting for the Court of Appeals to settle oral argument in that case. And so we anticipate that that will be happening sometime in the next six months, probably. And then that will be, they've been doing a pretty quick turnaround lately, the Court of Appeals, so a couple of cases that our firm argued in, I want to say, October, have had decisions in December. So the decisions are coming out of their briefcase once they're argued.
Any particular questions?
But that case, you know, presently the court considers that, and so the, it's being appealed by the plaintiff.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I only wish to comment again, if we had nothing to hide, then why in good faith would we, or this is a court action that's? Oh, 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 don't get me started. We don't have an option in that.
Okay, so?
The Attorney General, with his, Sandra versus State, he didn't have an option. In fact, they said, why do you come to this battle? Might you say? And, yeah, we have been open on everything, and people disagree with it. And that's the, Toby Nixon, President of Washington Coalition of Republican Government, and I've questioned him one time about it, because that's.
I can't hear you.
Oh. I yell. Talked to Toby Nixon one time about it, he's the President of Coalition of Republican Government, and I said, what was this, how come you don't want to go out and hit lawsuits? And he said, that's the only option we have. So if you have a disagreement, you know, if you can't top it out, it's a lawsuit. There's no one higher.
There is some legislation that's been floating around in the last couple of sessions where they're trying, initially, they're trying to get some sort of a mediation.
Yeah, there's another mediation bill coming up.
It hasn't gotten anywhere?
Last year, when they had the various types of bills, they just, they were just there for the people who don't have arguments.
Okay, so in most cases, usually, arbitration or mediation, those are alternatives to court actions. You're saying for this case, we don't have either option?
Well, initially, if a lawsuit's filed, then we have to respond. And we have attempted to mediate at least in one of the cases, but it was unsuccessful. So it's not that that hasn't been tried, but it has to, usually, it happens after the fact, after the lawsuit's already been filed.
I would love an arbitration move. I mean, if any good decision is made, move on. So, I mean, look at lawsuit number two. It's in one, here, well, now. Okay, why don't you give us a summation of Block lawsuit number three? It's here in the, I didn't bring anything on it, it's here in the page, Block versus Gobar three.
Can you have one of those three?
We just have your page, all we have is your.
Oh, I agree, oh, I'm sorry, okay, okay. So this was a lawsuit that was filed, I think, this summer by Ann Block, that essentially seeks the same document, documents that Ms. Forbes sought in her lawsuit, that the Superior Court did not find a reason to conduct a review of the documents that she requested that be reviewed to determine if they were properly not provided. And so what I did in that case is I filed a motion to stay pending the outcome of the Forbes case on the basis of judicial economy. It didn't make any sense why we'd go in and make the same arguments on that case when it had already been decided. And the court agreed and stayed that case. So we, that was, that was probably the most efficient one we've been able to deal with so far.
Let me comment about those documents. We have, when we went and collected emails, and I think I go into people's personal accounts and pull their emails out, he didn't, he pulled every email that they had in their personal account. And those of us who had our emails segregated in our personal accounts into city business folders and then other stuff, everything got downloaded. So we went through and needed to find the conduct of government documents, which are well-defined by a couple of, well-defined as it ever gets by a court. And out of approximately, I'm guessing thirty-three thousand emails, we determined that three thousand of them were not conduct of government. And I took a very stringent review on it, and people have said that I've released emails that were not conduct of government, and, but I took a risk aversion approach. There were like three attorneys giving this sort of direction. We had it done by paralegal, and with attorney review, and then I went through and pulling numbers off the top of my head, they, I think they had about four thousand emails that they deemed were not conduct of government, and I went through and took a much harsher view of things, and there's about a thousand of them that ended up being released, so.
We released more than what was required.
And so, and we've done everything, there's no real specific case law on this, there's some close by case law, and there's some case law leave in other states. And so these were the documents that the Superior Court judge said there was no reason to, for him to read. And so that was one part of the lawsuit, there's a lot of, several things in the lawsuit, and that was one part, so. Any questions on that?
So those personal emails that were not conduct of government?
Yeah.
Even though they were submitted, do those then become public record, or those are not public record?
They don't meet the definition of public record. And so that's basically what the legal issue is with the Court of Appeals.
And that's what they call it, the way this, I checked with the Attorney General's only lesson on it, and he said, what you do, you save them? Give them to a judge, and let the judge make the calls, call an in-camera review. And we offered that to the judge at the trial, and he declined to take that step.
Yeah, we don't object to it, he just doesn't find any reason to do it.
Maybe the next judge will find a reason to do it. Before we go to the next judge. Okay, okay, that's about all we got on lawsuit number three. So now we'll go to lawsuit number four. The summons and lawsuit is given here, and we received a settlement offer today, and that's also here. The, Margaret, why don't you give us, well, it's in here, number four, why don't you go through and talk about it, Margaret, and the summary sheet here, she goes through and comes in.
So the Ford lawsuit is based on, I think, three or four separate other PR requests that remain, or various documents, that Ms. Block alleges that the city failed to comply with the requests on. So the, in this, in this particular lawsuit, Ms. Block is seeking the penalty of a hundred dollars a day for each day that she alleges that the city failed to provide the documents and continues to provide the documents. So we know that Ms. Block's deposition was December 1st, and she did not appear. So we filed a motion for sanctions, as well as a motion to compel her attendance at another deposition, as that reimbursement of our costs and expenses and attorney's fees. The court grounded the city's request and awarded roughly seven thousand dollars in fees and costs, and also ordered Ms. Block to attend her deposition that was scheduled for yesterday. And to also pay the seven thousand dollar fees and costs by yesterday. Ms. Block did attend her deposition, we did get to take her deposition yesterday, but she did not pay her fees prior to the deposition. Today, Ms. Block did provide us with an offer of settlement on her suit. And Joe, did you have that out?
Yeah, the Block settlement offer, that's for lawsuit number four.
And so you should have a copy of the actual email that came in on that proposal? And she is offering all the summarize if you would like me to, Joe.
Is what now?
Would you like me to summarize what the offer is?
Which offer, her offer?
At this point?
I think they can read it.
Do you want me to continue to discuss the case, or do you want me just to make separate questions, or?
Well, let's just take questions, go ahead.
So down below what you were discussing here a minute ago, there's some bullet points, right, that probably continue to the next, to the back page?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, right?
That's Ms. Block's settlement offer.
That's, yeah, I kind of, I cut and cased it out of her email and.
Oh, okay, so this is her email.
But that's the exact email with the exact wording in it, and mine's a little more summarized.
Okay.
So why don't the council read it, and then we'll go to questions.
Can we ask questions?
Hey, once you're ready, yes.
On number one, the city shall pass.
On number one, the city shall pass an ordinance which prohibits the use of any personal electronic device considered on. Do I have to turn my cellphone off when I come in?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's right, that is if we agree.
Okay, I'm just clearing, just trying to understand what it means. And then on the, on the, on number two, if I downloaded something on stormwater management onto my, uh, thumb drive, the city's thumb drive, but I'm still using my personal computer, you know, I can't afford a hundred bucks every time I do that. Uh, how do I get that information if I can't use my own personal computers, is the question.
Well, she suggests that we replace your thumb drive, city provided thumb drive, with a city provided laptop. So, uh, you know, she had the laptop for two hundred and thirty dollars, but had no applications, as far as I know. And, uh, we could do something like get the open source software, which is pretty very software, and do that. Uh, but the ten dollar four gig thumb drives, uh, meet the public records, it's because it's the record, it's a public records act, not the public, uh, computer act. Uh, and, uh, I believe that she may take that as suitable. But again, when you start, you know, that's, that's the big difference. And I believe this Sultan School District does, does this approach. Uh, I'm not sure, I saw, when I went to one of the board meetings, I saw everybody whip out a small black computer, so they all look the same, at least.
So, so cost is an issue, but it's not a unreasonable request, in my mind, that all business should be also given, should be conducted on a machine that's isolated from personal use. Because there's, if, if it was on a public machine versus being put on a, on a personal machine, there, um, there's a lot less risk of, of an attempt to isolate documents.
Yeah, and, and I don't have any problem with that, you know, like you say, the expense is, is, is the only issue. I would actually prefer that.
Right.
But I don't want to burden the city if, if I don't have to, I mean, you.
But the other option is. Each purchase alone. I'm not, I'm not advocating that necessarily.
You have to be careful with the public records act in terms of anything personal. I mean, there's all sorts of, uh, ins and outs on that. It, it goes into a lot of technical details, but, uh, I'll admit, I don't, I don't think something we need to get into right now. But, uh, I believe the two options are a thumb, a ten dollar thumb drive or a, uh, a laptop of some sort.
The ten dollar thumb drive is really a neat solution, but if I could start all kinds of stuff on my computer, I didn't guarantee anything, other than this is, the thumb drive right here, Joe, this is my thumb drive. Official position, kind of thing.
But how do we know that you use the city provided computer?
You can come in here and use this computer sometimes, that's what I do.
Yeah, come in here and use, this is the, another alternative, is to do all your work here at City Hall with either this or one of the other computers on here.
So, so, all volunteer counsel, you know, a hundred dollars a month, right? Um, sometimes you just get completely overwhelmed with the work, because there's so much to do, such as the ordinance or the employee handbook, you know, i.e., you know, everything else. And you have this computer to work on. So if we all were to do that, we'd be sitting here waiting for the next person to get done.
Agreed.
You know?
And, and the other issue is, uh, if you have to come in here to check your email, right, you have the public records that we need to comply with for two days. Those are kind of contradictory, because you're not going to come in here every two days to check your email.
Right, right, it's as time allows, you know.
Again, this is a proposal, this isn't anything that's required in the law.
Sure. Okay, let's, uh, move on. City will have the motion after motion to withdraw sanctions in this motion to compel. Um, yeah, what is that, you said? Mark?
She's requesting that we move to withdraw, um, the order granting sanctions.
Seven thousand dollars.
But, I can't really, I can't really withdraw a judge's order, it's, it's an order. We could, you know, I can talk about that in executive session, but that's basically what she's asking for.
Yeah, anything going forward, I want to talk about executive session, this is history, uh, we do. A city will have to pay all costs associated with this case. Okay, and then, offer in any settlement case must be discussed and decided openly by the counsel within two weeks after signing this agreement, so. And then she comes in that the city purchased laptops, uh, because they're cheaper than litigation, and it only pertains to this case.
But then you have till Thursday.
You've got till Thursday to do it. That's why we're going to executive session tonight, any, okay, I'll, I'll shut up and listen to any questions.
I do have one, um, to better understand the point of the four, city will have to pay all costs associated with this case. What does that mean, what kind of money are we talking about?
Didn't say.
Didn't say.
So rather open-ended question, or open-ended demand?
So, so let me answer this question. So the order was, or payment of seven thousand, but that in no way, that in no way compares to what the city has spent. What did the city spend on this case?
I haven't gone through and totaled it, because I really wanted to have a nice holiday period. Uh, but you know, we did add the extra, what, fifteen thousand bucks in anticipation of these costs, but that was, uh, for the recall and also for handling lawsuit number four, plus whatever else came up. So I have not gone through and tried to make a summation. All the information's on the city website, and someone who wants.
We can certainly pull that up for you, and we can provide you with a number view of the case. The seven thousand was a conservative estimate of the cost of just, just the deposition that, that wasn't attended in preparations of, not even all of the preparations, but some of the preparation for the motion, and then argument of the motion, and presenting it.
So the judge, um, neither intended for this to be retribution for expenses already paid, nor, nor punishment of any sort, is, is it just a matter of, uh, I, I guess, we could guess at what its intent was, I guess I don't really know what its intent was, but there's no punitive in here, and, and it's not really totally reimbursed either.
It's not called reimbursement, the rules read that if a party fails to appear at their own deposition, that you're entitled to the costs.
For that deposition?
For, for the failure for that person to appear at the deposition, and you can move the court also for costs incurred and needing to move for your costs for the deposition that wasn't attended, and that's basically what we did in the rules.
So, so then I have another question too. I don't know if this is going forward, so I don't know. But, but, actually, actually it would be going forward, I guess, so I guess I'll have another question now.
All right. Any further questions or discussions?
Then, do you want to talk about recall now?
Yeah, the recall petition, recap, it, it, why don't you, is, what's the stat, current status of?
The current status is that the, um, judge's decision that was issued on the first, needed to have been appealed by the sixteenth, and it was not appealed, so it's a final decision. Um, I understand from the latest email I received from Ms. Block that she intends to, uh, file a motion to withdraw that appeal, but she, she did file an appeal that was untimely. And then she was going to, uh, motions withdraw that, and I don't remember the date of that email, but she stated in it that she would do it within three days. So, um, if, if it's not done within three days, or if the court contacts me, then the city has to file a motion, and, you know, we will pursue, um, costs and sanctions on that as well.
Okay. And we have a sanctions hearing, when?
There's, um, currently a motion for, uh, sanctions that's scheduled, we rescheduled it, it was originally scheduled for January twelve. And I think it was moved to February nineteen, I think, it was. Ms. Block had stated she was available the nineteenth and the twenty-second, um, so I think we had moved it to the nineteen.
Okay. And, uh, everything is in there, the judge's summary, et cetera, et cetera. Have a chance to read that? Okay, we're going to go into executive session now. And the rules of the executive session are basically, we've got these three issues to discuss. Here's with the attorney, we'll have Jeff Myers on the phone. And in the executive session, we only discuss the very narrow issues, uh, no comments about the Seahawks, uh, no jokes, no idle chit chat, it's all business, so. I would, I would read that, that's text. This is, this is the preface, this is the intro. Yes, bring the documents with you, I think they will, they will probably wish to refer back to the old times. And, uh, these documents, this is the stuff. And, but we will go in there, so now I will read the official law and profits. The Gobart City Council is going into executive session as authorized by RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero, parentheses, one, close parentheses, parentheses, I close parentheses, to discuss pending litigation with legal counsel, and action is expected. Now, entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session at?
Seven forty-three.
Seven forty-three, it's, uh, expected to last forty-five minutes. No motion for that? They do lose, or a second?
A second, yeah.
Or a seconds. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
So we're adjourning into executive session.